Good evening. It is 7 o'clock on Monday, August 11th, 2025. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to order. If we could all stand, please, and face the flag and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Yes.
Member Allen, absent. Member Creel.
Here.
Member Krug.
Here.
Member McDonald.
Here.
Member Seer.
Here.
Member Willner, absent. Chair McGalpine.
Here.
And we have our alternate member Benedict. I'll go ahead and set him up. Perfect. Come forward, please. Pick an end. All right. Thank you. So we have quorum. We have five of our seven, six of our seven members present for this evening's meeting. If we could go ahead, everyone should have received a copy of the agenda in our packets. If everyone's had a chance to review the agenda, I'd like a motion to approve and support the agenda for this evening's meeting, please.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor of approving the meeting agenda for Monday, August 11th, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Our agenda is approved. Next up is the approval of minutes from our last meeting, which was on July 14th. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to review those as well. If there are any comments or questions, we can entertain those now. If not, we do need a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting, please. Any changes, corrections? Okay.
I'll move to approve them as written.
Thank you.
I'll support.
All in favor of approving the minutes from our last meeting on July 14th, 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, our minutes have been approved. It doesn't look like we have any old business on our agenda tonight, so we can jump right into the new business. It is application number PBA 0625, DePore Building LLC, representing 3617 Buckingham, parcel 042507385024, located on the west side of Buckingham between 12 Mile and Edwards. They are requesting a dimensional variance of 2.2 feet on the north side of the property on a required distance between dwelling units. Ms. Anderson, if you can please go ahead and give us the background on this, please?
Certainly. The applicant is requesting a dimensional variance of 2.2 feet on the north side of the property to allow for demolition of an existing single-family dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling, not meeting the setback requirement for the minimum distance between dwelling units of 15 feet. Per Berkeley City Code, Chapter 138, Zoning, Section 5.02D, minimum distance between dwelling units is 15 feet. The board has been provided the history of both properties detailing the side yard setback nonconformity on the property to the north at 3617 Buckingham. The south side yard setback at 3617 Buckingham has a nonconformity of 2.2 feet, where it is 2.8 feet when five feet is required. For a variance to be approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals, it shall meet the standards of Section 138, 17.04 of the zoning ordinance based on findings of fact. We request the Zoning Board of Appeals to determine if there are unique characteristics of the property and the applicant demonstrated a practical difficulty in order to grant a non-use variance. Motions for approval and denial are included in your packets.
Thank you. So I'll open it up to my fellow commissioners. Are there any discussions or questions from Ms. Anderson as she's presented the case before us this evening?
The city has denied the application.
Mr. Creel?
Yes, I have, as far as the plans that were submitted for the plans on the new construction with it not meeting the setback requirements.
Solely because of the setback?
Correct.
There's no other issues?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any more questions? Okay. I'd like to open the public hearing, and if the petitioner could come up and state your name and your record, your name and your address for the record, please, and tell us why you are requesting the variance, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John DePore. I am at 3617 Buckingham Avenue is the parcel that we're talking about here tonight. My office is in Bloomfield Hills, 4601 Maple Road, Bloomfield. And the reason I'm here tonight is, as aforementioned, the conformity is, for the, to follow the ordinance on this particular instance, is due, the hardship I feel is due to the fact that, as mentioned, the house to the north is out of, is out of conformity with a minimum of five feet on one side of the property line. The existing home that's there is also nonconform because it is, it did use the full breadth of what would be the, pardon me, the billing envelope. So even though, as it stands today, the house that is existing there is also nonconform because of the side yard setback. I don't know which came first. I don't know which, who built, who, what job was built first ahead of the other or not. I think, I think the house that I bought was built in, I think, '61, and I think the one to the north was prior to that. So, but that's kind of my, the hardship that I felt that's led me here tonight.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the petitioner? Yes, Ms. Seer?
3617 has a basement. Doesn't it?
It has a basement, yep.
You're keeping the basement, but you're taking down all the rest of the house? Or are you keeping that basement footprint?
Yeah, well, I'll be taking the basement out for the new home, just to have a, because I will be going further back on the lot with the home, with the full basement.
Oh, okay.
You bought the house...
Mr. Creel?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
You bought the house in March, right?
I think we closed, yeah.
Did you have any consultation with the city in advance of it, presumably to do what you intend to do with it?
Yeah, broadly, we did. I came in and met with Kim and just said, hey, what, you know, I just saw, I got an idea what are the setbacks and that. I didn't speak specific to this lot when we talked. And at that point, I think you guys were redoing rear yard setbacks for the different lot sizes where they were going to be made contiguous throughout the community. So I knew about that. I didn't mention this lot, but we didn't look at, you know, I didn't have a plot plan at the time, right? We just had what we have. And Kim just, you know, as always, graciously said, this is what you need to do. Not until I had the, and again, I probably would have just measured off the existing house and said, okay, you know, this is what it is, and that's it. So that's, that's how this came to be, though. Like I say, after I got the plot plan, then we called up.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd also like to open it up to the public. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak, and I see no one. Do we have any email correspondence?
None received.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so we will close this portion of the public hearing and open it up to my fellow commissioners for discussion. Who would like to start us off?
So the...
Mr. Krug, sorry.
The new constructed home within its lot has the proper setbacks?
Correct.
So we're just, the whole problem right now is the home to the north that is so close to the property line. That's...
Correct.
So it's the distance between the homes that we're dealing with and not a setback from the property line?
Yeah, the proposed meets all the setback requirements for that parcel.
Okay.
They have their required 15 feet total side yard setback, and it's just the property to the north that does not have their five foot that then takes it away from, if they did 17 feet on their property, then they would have like a 22-foot house.
Okay. Anyone else make a comment, question? Ms. Seer?
In a case like this, do you talk to, does anybody reach out to the neighbor that's so, that's the, on the property line or 2.8?
Yes, they were all noticed. The, yeah, they had the, you know, the notices that were sent out to the newspaper, along with anyone within 300 feet of the property gets a notice mailed to them.
And the sign, correct?
And the sign is on the property as well. Thank you, yes.
And do you know if that's renters or owner?
I did not check.
That's fine. More just curious about who was there.
Do you know, Ken, John?
If you can come up and just state your name and, your name for the record again, please.
John DePore, back at it. So we had a lawn service cutting the lawn over there during the summer, and at one point, the homeowner, what I presume is the homeowner, came out and said, I'm the owner of this home. I just want to know what's going on because I'm thinking of renting my house out starting like next year. So that's, that's what we...
Thank you. Okay. Anyone? Mr. Creel?
Yeah.
You're ready to talk?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what else we could ask them to do. You know, they stayed in here, it would narrow my home, causing a non-marketable plan. But as we've already talked about, they are in compliance in their own lot. You know, we always fall back on the property owner, previous property owner's fault here. In a way, they're correcting the existing property owner's fault, to the extent that their lot is, will be in compliance with the ordinance. Even the previous owner that built this didn't control where the neighbor to the north built their lot. I'm having a hard time getting to know. I don't really want to get to know, especially, because I think development's a good thing, particularly in Berkeley. But I don't, I don't see what, I don't see an alternative for the applicant in this situation. And to find a path of lesser resistance, to me, doesn't make any sense.
Anyone else want to make a comment? Ms. Seer?
Any renovation to the existing house would cause them to have to be here, correct? If they were going to update the house that, that is existing?
Correct. If they wanted to do like an addition, second story, yeah, because of far as not being, you know, if they're not 15 feet from that adjacent dwelling.
And is... Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, and I failed to mention earlier today that if we could just make sure we're speaking into our microphones, so the IT folks don't have to come and talk to us. Okay, so we could, we could do one of two things. We can either entertain a motion, or we can look at the criteria, the five criteria that we need to meet. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I think it might be beneficial to go through the criteria.
Okay. So the first one is, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. And remember, we have to, we all have to agree that they all, the answer to the questions are yes. If we answer no to any of these five criteria, then we do need to deny the request. The need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or previous property owners. So if we look at those first two, do we believe there's some unique circumstances or physical conditions to the property?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And the next one is, the need for the variance is not the result of the action of the property owner or the previous property owners. And I think we all agree to that one as well.
Yes.
The next one is, strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. Mr. Creel?
I, I agree with that. Again, they're not, they're keeping it within the parameters they need to on their lot. That's the kicker for me. If they were going to try and move this or build a, build a new build that was going to even maintain the existing issue, I think that that's aligned too far. But they're not.
I do struggle with this one a little bit, only because there is an existing house there, can be used as a house. No one has to do anything to the property, and people can still live there tonight, tomorrow, and into the future. It's unfortunate, but it's, we're not, by saying no, we're not taking away their right to have a home.
I also struggled a little bit with number three, just because there is an assertion that if they were to make a smaller footprint in the new build, that it would become non-marketable. But the proposal is actually an expansion of the lot. They're going back further. So this is, yeah, I don't know. You know, I'm not a home builder, but I do think, you know, if the area is actually increasing, I'm not certain about number three right yet.
Okay. Any other discussion around that?
Well, it's, it's to unreasonably prevent the property owner from using it for a permitted purpose, or will render the conformity unnecessarily burdensome. They're not increasing the lot size, they're increasing the house size.
Right.
Moving it back to better center the unit.
Correct. But it is a house today, and it would be a house if we said no tomorrow.
Right, but they could, John, to that theory, they had to be before us under any, any change to the property. If they want to go up, if they wanted to go out, any direction, they'd have the same variation issue, correct?
Right. But technically, they could, he could do nothing and live in the house if he didn't want to change the house. I think that's kind of where I struggle a little bit. It's their choice. Ms. Seer?
Would you, in that situation, then, would you have less of a problem if they were just going up with the existing house in that case? Because they would still be back here for approval of the variance. Is it more...
I guess it's the fact that they're tearing it down, they're tearing down a house that is functioning as a home today on that property.
Right. But to answer your question, if they were to go straight up?
They're not, they're not asking for anything more than what they have today. But they're, they're tearing down what they have. And it says, compliance would make, prevent the property owner from using the property for permitted use. It's, that, that is not the case. They could still live, you know, they could do nothing, and they could live in a house. This is a, this is a very difficult one. I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny it. I mean, we can kind of go back and forth, but if we, that's how I, that's how I interpret this.
Yeah, and I guess with, you know, number three, it's, you know, as you're mentioning, as far as being able to continue to use it as a permitted purpose, you know, or will render conformity with these regulations unnecessarily burdensome. So it could go in regards to, it might still be able to be used as permitted use, but could it be considered unnecessarily burdensome?
Yes. I mean, are we making this into a piece of property that no one's ever going to want to buy at some point in the future? And I think that's, you know, that's the other side of it.
Yes.
Yeah, I think I kind of feel that if, if they were, it's kind of the same thing. If they were going to remodel this home, go up, and they'd have to come to us for variance. In this case, they want to start from scratch. So I see that it's, it's kind of, either way. I mean, it'd be in front of us, and if they want to expand this home, I feel they should be able to.
Yeah, like I said, I just, it's one of those things where, if, you know, we look at, we're not preventing the property owner from using the property as a house, I think. The next one is, the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as the property owners. Thoughts on that? Mr. Creel? Mr. Benedict? Ms. Seer? Mr. McDonald? Roll call, I'm talking, I'm just going around here.
If yes to three, then yes to four. Like it's, I think it's a question of math at that point.
Okay. And then the last one is, requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties.
I do think that it could potentially impact surrounding properties.
Let's see. I do think that that property already causes the problem.
True.
So I don't think, I mean, you're not impacting them any more than, they've impacted you, really, is how I look at it. Someone did at some point, made that decision.
Right, true.
And also, the new home would be pushed back. So it's actually, they're continuing the frontages of the home, existing homes in the neighborhood, and the existing home there now is more forward. The front yard setback is less than it should be, and they're actually taking the house back. So it's...
Trying to fix something.
Trying to fix something. That's a good way to put it.
There's no evidence by anybody, I mean, we noticed it properly, everything is, there's no evidence that somebody is objecting to it, and apparently, the person that lives to the north is an owner. So they would have an interest in this. I don't think it's our place to speculate on the potential impact without any evidence to suggest that people are claiming to be adversely affected by it. It's not, would not be the first time we had a property owner coming in and say, I don't want this new build. We haven't gotten that here.
Okay. So do we, we can continue our discussion? We can go back to the few that maybe we need more discussion on, or we can entertain a motion?
I'm, I'm struggling with which way would be the best. I mean, if, do you guys feel like we should have moved to approve this and vote on it? Or would, it seems like everybody kind of feels like that's where it's going.
Thoughts? Additional comments?
What do we need, four out of six to pass with this number?
Majority, yes.
Just a majority?
Mm-hmm.
I think it is required.
Yeah, that's what I said, majority, four.
That would be a majority.
Yeah, four out of...
Three would be a tie.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? Do we want to look at this plan again? Do we want to...
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Creel?
Motion to approve PBA 0625, 3617 Buckingham, on the basis that the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. The unique condition being that the home to the north is a noncompliant property that causes this to suffer a setback that is less than the required variance, excuse me, less than required under the ordinance. That variance is not the result of actions of property owner or previous property owners at issue here. It is the result of the property owner to the north. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, i.e. tearing it down and building a conformity lot, or will render conformity with the regulations unnecessarily burdensome. I actually think both apply. Explain how the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as other property owners. As Mr. Benedict pointed out, in the argument in favor of three, the argument flows that four is also met. They're not asking for 10 feet, they're asking for two. And the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. We have no evidence from the public or the neighbors that this is going to be an issue within their street. I believe it meets all five criteria, and therefore, we should approve this as requested.
Okay. Do we have a support?
I'll support.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Creel, can we do a vote, please?
Certainly. Member McDonald?
No.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Uh, member Benedict?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
And Chair McGalpine?
No.
We have four. So your motion is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's not always fun sitting in this chair either.
Boy.
Yep, I'll be in touch.
Okay, thank y'all, have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, so other business we have on the agenda tonight is rules of procedure.
Yeah.
Ms. Anderson?
Okay, so we approved the rules of procedure last month. I overlooked that with the new zoning ordinance change that occurred, that under Section 2.1B, we had Chapter 94 signs that was in there. So I had to eliminate that. So now it will just read Chapter 2, Section 40 for ethics, and Chapter 138 for zoning. Made one other change under that section. Any other material deemed necessary by the Community Development Director has been changed to Community Development Zoning Administrator. And then in Section 2 for Duties B, the section that indicates that the Zoning Board of Appeals shall approve the excused absence, we've changed the wording to acknowledge the absence. So those were the, the three items that were changed on the rules of procedure.
Do you need any action from us, or just...
Yeah, I just need to have a motion moved to approve as rewritten.
Okay, if we could have a motion to approve the rewritten rules of procedures as presented this evening? Can we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Ms. Seer? Do we have, can we just do all call? Or do you need a vote?
Uh, we can do an all call.
Okay, all in favor of approving the newly presented rules of procedure with the modifications that we just discussed? Everyone can say aye, who approves?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, moving on. Next up is the staff, and board member report, please.
Okay. In your packets was the Community Development Monthly Report for June of 2025. And also, in your packet, I included a copy of the Board and Commission's Handbook that was recently adopted by City Council. As I mentioned in the email, administrative process will still be as it currently is. I will still be doing all of that for the board, and we are grateful to have you.
Yes, we are.
And there is no meeting scheduled for September.
All right.
Yeah, September.
Thank you. Councilman Henanen, do you have anything to report to us this evening?
Yeah, I, some of you may know, but I just wanted to acknowledge that our zoning ordinance rewrite won an award from the Michigan Association of Planning, their Planning Excellence Award for Public Outreach. Just the amount of effort we spent going out to the community, soliciting feedback, incorporating that into the process. So we were recognized for that by the top planning organization in the state.
And thank you to you and Kristen, and everyone who was involved in it.
Yes, the steering committee and everyone, yes. A large, yep, thank you.
Okay, there is no one in the audience for any public comments, so I will go ahead at 7:28. If I could have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting, please? Anyone?
I move to adjourn.
Ms. Seer? Motion to adjourn, support, please?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Krug. All in favor of adjourning this evening's meeting? Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Everybody have a nice evening. Happy to work.